Well, if we can get our two chiefs to sit down, we'll get started.[9.27][9.27][laughter] I'll probably get stopped and get a ticket next week. We'd like to welcome you to our September 7th, 2022 special city council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency, ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is getting the opportunity, so the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allowed three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. Could we all please stand for the invocation, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance? Our invocation will be a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Askew.
Here.
Councilmember Trace.
Here.
At this time, we'll have any updates to the agenda by our city manager, Madam Miller. Do you have any additions or changes?
No, thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. There are no presentations at this time. The next item on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signed form to be provided by the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical after the person addresses the council. Would anyone in our vast audience like to come and speak to the council at this time? Seeing there are no one, we will move on to our consent agenda. And there are no consent items at this time, so we'll move on to public hearings. Brings us to our first item under public hearings. Madam Clerk, will you please read item one into the record?
First of two public hearings for Resolution Number 2022-187R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final ad valorem tax millage for the City of St. Cloud for the fiscal year 2022-2023, the same being adopted prior to the adoption of a final budget for said period.
Good evening. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. This is your Florida Statute 200-0625. These are the first of two public hearings that are required in order to adopt a final ad valorem tax millage of 5.1128. This is 11.79% about above the rollback rate, which is 4.5736. Resolution 2022-187R, your rollback rate, these are the same tax dollars assessed as the previous tax year, not including new construction, and then measured as a millage rate. This ensures that the increase in taxable values for existing properties is not considered for ad valorem tax. Some key takeaways from the ad valorem tax millage, millage rate is, of course, the amount taxable per dollar on assessed value of property. As used in property tax, one mil is equal to a dollar in property tax that is levied for every thousand, per thousand of property tax value assessed. Governments, of course, set millage rates based on this total value of property within their jurisdiction. Property taxes are calculated by multiplying the assessed taxable value by the millage rate and divided by 1,000. For in this example, we'll do math together. Millage rate, 5.1128. A taxpayer's residence is taxable with a value of $100,000. That property tax bill is $511.28, so it means $1,000 divided into that $100,000, multiplied by the 5.1128, and we have $511.28 in property taxes. This is just a graphical representation of your millage rate history throughout the City of St. Cloud. In the blue is the adopted millage rate. In the red is your rolled back rate, starting back from 1718 fiscal year all the way through 2223. As you can see, we've kept a consistent line at that 5.1128 mils. And as you can count there through the years, that is three, four, five, six consecutive fiscal years. The proposed millage rate again for this final is 5.1128. Average property value, that tax value that was put into the workup was 232,000 with an average yearly tax cost of 1,187. Highlights of the services funded by city property taxes, where does your money go? Public safety, emergency management, and law enforcement, community-related, those are parks and facilities, recreation programs, cemeteries. In the engineering and utilities, it could go into roads, walkways, and lighting. Community development, public transportation, development of buildings and licensing, and then planning urban and design, and as well as sustainability. 5.1128 millage rate is needed, of course, to fund the following increases in the 22-23 proposed general fund budget. This is a 9.8 increase in personnel costs this year due to a salary survey implementation, a 5% cost of living adjustment, six new general fund positions, and an increase in health insurance costs. For the salary survey, it's a $1.3 million increase to the general fund, 975,000 for that 5% COLA, 566,869 for the six general fund positions, 481,287 for the increase in health insurance cost. Increase in operating is also due to the the cost of goods and services increasing in various levels to provide the services we need. In public safety, that cost to operate increased by 805,230, and then in parks and recreation, Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2022-187R and is requesting approval of city council in the such for 2022-187R for the final ad valorem tax public hearing number one for that such millage. And I will answer any questions the council so does have.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Thank you. Seeing there is none, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Motion to approve? We have a motion from Councilmember Askew. We have a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to item number two. Madam Clerk.
First of two public hearings for Resolution Number 2022-188R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final budget for the City of St. Cloud for the fiscal year 2022-2023, the same being adopted following the adoption of a final millage rate for said period.
Good evening again to the council. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. This is your first public hearing in the final budget approval for fiscal year 2223, Resolution Number 2022-188R. Florida Statute Number 166-241, this is the requirement for the city to adopt a budget each fiscal year by ordinance or resolution. These amounts available are from taxation and other sources, including balances brought forward from prior fiscal years, and they equal the appropriations for expenditures and reserves. In other words, the adopted budget must balance, which it is. At any time, please feel free to stop me if you have any questions and/or comments. I will begin with giving you the revenue and overviews graphically and also listed for you. But again, stop me if you have any questions that I may so answer. Our revenue projections for fiscal year 2223 are 209.2 million dollars. This graphic representation just lets you know, based on funds, fund types and groups, where that 209.2 is diversified in. With the general fund, as you can see there, is 30.2% at 63.1%. Special revenue funds at 22.1%. Debt service fund in the green, located at 2.6 million or 1.2% of the budget. Capital in the nifty purple going at 7.3%, 15.2 million dollars. Your enterprise funds, this is your light teal aqua, maybe marine, at 33.4, 69.8 million dollars of the budget. Internal service funds, these are your fleet and providing internal services to your employees, 5% or 10.4 million dollars in the orange. And finally, economic development funds in the lavender small sliver there at 1.8 million dollars or 0.9 of a percent. In the inverse, again, fully balanced at 209.2 million dollars. Those same representations of where those expenditures were diversified through are as follows. In the general fund, 30.2%. All these percentages will obviously equal the same as it will be 209.2, but I will read them for you, just in case. 22.1% in special revenue at 46.3, debt service at 1.2%, 2.6 million dollars. Capital projects at 7.3%, 15.2. Enterprise funds at 33.4% of your budget, 69.8%. Uh, excuse me, million. And internal service funds in, again, the orange, at 10.4 million, 5% of your budget. And economic development funds at 0.9 of a percent or 1.8 million dollars. The revenue, as far as revenues by type, for 2223 are listed here. Graphically represented reserves are at 8% of your budget, 16.9 million dollars out of the 209.2. Going towards general government, 15% of your budget, 31.7. Permits and fees, 32 million or 15% of your budget is made up of that. Intergovernmental transfers, 8.3 or 4%. Charges for services, 70.80 mil at 34%. Judgments and fines in the small, very small orange. Let me get back to that for you because I can't even see it from here. That's how small it is.[777.44][777.44][laughter]
We'll trust you that it is there.
I promise it is, but let me get you the copy. I will return to that, but it's a very small sliver. Miscellaneous at 8 million dollars or 4%. And then other sources in, you know, that lighter red, 19% or 39 mil. And finally, non-operating, 2.4 million or 1%. I am going to reference just to give you everything correctly, and you have that small slither of revenue, if you give me one second. Okay, fines and forfeitures are a very, very small, 0.2 of a percent at 0.1 total rev for the entire budget. So, sorry, it doesn't depict very well, but it's a sliver very tinily in there. Okay, revenue by sources for the general fund, specifically for this year, revenue is at 63.1 mil. Fund balance forward in the blue at 11.9%. Ad valorem proceeds at 29%. Other taxes as revenue sources, 1.7%. Licenses and permits, about another 3%. Intergovernmental revenue coming in at 10.6%. Charges for services, 7.3%. Fines and forfeitures, there is that small sliver, 0.2%. And then miscellaneous revenue at 5.4% of your total revenue sources for the general fund. And finally, other financing sources, 30.9%. As we hit over to the expenditure side of the house, at 63.1 million, again, balance, you can tell graphically here, reserves at 2% of the total budget for the general fund. General government services taking about 28% of that. Public safety, 53% of your budget in that big green section that you see there. 4% in purple for your transportation, parks and recreation coming in at 13%. And other financing uses doesn't even qualify for a percent. It's at zero depicted, but it's less than, let's point one. Projected year-end fund balances, this is again for 2223. The general fund, $9 million in year-end fund balances with capital projects at 12.5 All right, year-end balances, again, as we go through funds, we're going across all of them, parks and impact fees. This is again projected and unaudited, 12.3 million dollars. Police impact at 5.1 million, fire impact 565,000. And the mobility fees, 16.2 million. And sanitation impact, $375,000. Continuing on for your projected year-end balance in sanitation, $820,000. Stormwater, $1.1 million. Building permit, $2 million. Motor pool, $280,000. Questions that I'm asking myself, what is Wendy saying right now? This is revenue minus expenditures, what we have left over, minus any encumbrances coming over. This is what you have in reserves, if you're wondering what I'm saying. Okay? Gas tax, 414, 421 in utility service, 1,000. 256,000 in 1% fund. Oh, you see interlocal, 458,000. And at this point, we have nothing to report for Toho interlocal. That is the new fund that we've created this coming fiscal year. Self-insurance health fund, $316,000. Self-insurance workers' comp, $1.3 million. CDBG, at this point, this is a new fund that we reactivated, so it does not have fund balance for this year. Economic development, $50,000. The CRA, $1.1 million. Staff is recommending, of course, approval of Resolution Number 2022-188R. This is your first public hearing on the final budget for 2223 fiscal year.
Thank you very much. We know that was a lot of work, and we appreciate all the work you guys and the staff have put into that. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Wendy, and I'm sure it's in here, but when we do the transfer over to Toho, then they give us the intergovernmental transfer back end of, I think the base was 4.1 or something like that.
The $3 million, like pilot, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it was more than three, right? It wasn't like...
It was a base of 3 million, no matter what happens, we're projected to have more than, and then the ad mill allocation on top of that.
So where is that quantified in, that revenue list that you just did?
It is the entire...
Oh, you see interlocal?
No, there's a Toho, there's a Toho interlocal now. It's fund number 1...
60? But when you went through that slide that showed the revenues that was on there?
It's included in the 209 million point one, yes, ma'am.
Can you back up to the slide?
Yeah, it's in intergovernmental funds in your poll.
Okay.
Do we have any other discussion? Could I entertain a motion? I make a motion for the adoption of our budget. Could I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from the mayor, a second from Mr. Trey, Councilman Trace. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to item number three. Madam Clerk.
First of two public hearings for Resolution Number 2022-189R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the 2022-2027 five-year capital improvement plan with an effective date of October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2027, subject to an annual review and amendment as needed to support the service levels and community needed.
Good evening again. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Five-year CIP plan is under Resolution 2022-189R. This is under the financial procedures of 6.01-6 through 6407 for the City of St. Cloud's capital improvement plan, further referred to as the CIP from here on. This establishes, prioritizes, and defines your funding for capital projects to improve your existing systems and the development of new infrastructures throughout the city and its facilities. Below is a, again, graphical line bar of the CIP cost for departments across the city, You'll start with the building department there at 3.8 million dollars. 58.9 fire rescue, 112,000. Human resources finance at 550K. Information technology department, 9.6. Parks and recreation, 57.8. The police department, 43.8 million. And public works at 36 million. Outlining those sources as I did now, this is a much bigger graphic representation, as well as through the funds, so you could see them diversified and allocated throughout the need. The general fund, 14,906,321. Your local option gas tax, 2,150. The 1% surcharge fund or your 120 fund, 24,602,382. Recreation, 17,62,314. Police impact and fire impact consecutively, 6,300,009,27,105. Mobility impact fees, the 350 fund, 850,000. Your storm water fund, 450, 1,526,275. Your building fund, 7,290,000, and that is building fund 460, excuse me. And economic development fund, 630, 662,000 even. There are two requirements of debt in order to fund this capital plan at a grand total of 214,159,899. That comes with one debt issuance of 65 million, 18,540, and a second tranche of debt, 54,185,462. The new let debt, 2023 loan assumptions, this is a summary of it. The projected loan proceeds at 65 million, 18,540. No capitalized interest in that, but an issuance cost of about 1.5%. 975,260, of course, if interest bearing in our power to dead out continues, we could see less of a cost there, but at this point, this is where we at. So your total principal loan, 65,993,800. Term of years for that tranche, 30 years, at an interest rate of 5%. Year borrowing, of course, would be 2023 projected, and the average annual debt service payment would be 4,993. Let's call that a whopping $5 million. Your debt issuance then the following fiscal year, 24, this is 54,185,462. Again, issuance cost graphed at about 1.5%, 812, let's call it 813. Total principal amount loaned out, 54, 55 million. Same issuance of time, 30 years, 5%. Year borrowing, 24 all the way through, plus 30. Let's hope everybody's retired by then, but an annual average debt service payment of 3.577,700 for those two requirements in order to fund the capital plan as it lays right now for the existing next five years. Some of the projects throughout the 2223 capital here are your trail extension lake to Chisholm, $1 million, listed from the Park and Impact as the funding sources. Your Chisholm Park master plan for that, $1 million from Park and Impact fees. Hopkins Park master plan, 500,000. Triangle Park, Parks and Rec for 630,000. Fire Station 35, this is 4.5 million call right now. This is a combination of the 120 or the 1% surcharge, $3 million from the fire impact fees. The modular office for the police department, 415,000. This is coming strictly from police impact fees. The master paving, 1.2 million. This is coming from your gas tax. Miscellaneous road connections, 1.51 million from mobility impact fees. Your 10th Street Complete Streets, 515,000 for mobility. Michigan Avenue, the PAD project, 110,000 for mobility. Massachusetts Extension, mobility impact fees as well. And then your Creekwood Drive Extension, 420,000 mobility impact fees. 17th Street Extension from your mobility funds as well for 210,000. And your 5th Street Upgrade, 70,000 for mobility impact fees again. Total capital for this fiscal year, 2223, 15,195,000. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2022-189R and request your approval of the same 2022-189R for your five-year capital plan.
Thank you very much. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the five-year capital plan? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. So what's the intent of some of this information being put in front of us? Because there's like this next year, which I think we've got that pretty well honed in on, you know, some design projects for some roads, getting things queued up for police and fire stations. Are we approving this next year, next five-year plan with the debt allocations in here?
The plan would be yes, that you are adopting with knowing that you need debt in order to complete it. Again, the intent of this presentation would be, one, it hasn't been done before in previous to give you an idea of what your plan looks like and what you need in order to fund it. So we want to give you a transparent view that you need debt, need a debt out in these amounts if you're going to proceed with this. But however, as you noticed in the CIP plan, you go yearly, and this can change. So if, let's say, council comes back next year, and when you strategize or like really don't want to dead out 60 million, then we reallocate and you prioritize capital based on the operational need, the capacity you want to be at, and the service levels that you need to provide. So you can redo. So this is not hard, right? You know, I mean, we still got to get in debt, you know? Something could change economically, but it's really to tell you, in order to achieve this plan as it is right now, we would need these funding sources for you.
Okay, because I don't want it to be misconstrued that I'm comfortable with what we're spending on if we do the 2023 loan of 66 million dollars. I think there's other priorities that need to be in there and some that might need to be pushed out. Because right now, with the Toho debt going, or the water wastewater debt going away, when we have like 30, 35 million dollars of the debt, we're going to more than double that with this first tranche for some nice-to-have stuff and not necessarily all need-to-have stuff. And then also, the picture of our capital plan is going to look a whole lot different come November or the November after if the penny sales tax renews, doesn't renew.
Absolutely.
So I just don't want there, marching down the path and then, you know, I won't be here, but next council gets a, you know, hey, we're about to issue 60 million dollars in debt on a given Thursday.
Yes, sir.
And then, you know, we, everyone's kind of working down that path. So I, you know, I just a little bit worried about that whenever we approve something like this.
Well, let me also reiterate, the intent was, because your last CIP, that consultant who prepped it did not have funding sources, though they were presenting a capital plan that at least did not even have, how are you going to get the additional 112 mil? This one does now. The added is that they do look at our fund balance and have projected what we have cash in hand to, one, make those payments, right? So while you don't have to get in debt, this is just so everybody has the same page of music, you know what the plan is aligned with your strategic and comprehensive plans, and then if you don't want to go that direction, or staff, or whatever will may take in new council members, you can change it. It's organic, but I can tell you, we'll need some form of debt for something, whatever that priority as it changes. So take this as a very organic document that lets you know we have funding channels available, but they are not locked in. You know, as you can tell, if you look at your CIP right now and what is in 2223 and you see what you actually funded, apples to oranges, right? 15 mil out of what do we need, you know? Almost double that amount. So that's where I talk about delays and changing and priorities. So that's why you have your strategic meeting, so that you can talk about it, prioritize again, not put the city in anything you don't want. again, not put the city in anything you don't wish to be in, and talk about it with the, with the team and, you know, the experts on what they need to do in order to keep the city running for you. But yes, sir. Thank you for noting that.
And then anytime we look at big capital asks, I, I'd like folks to look into the OpEx as well, the operational cost, because if we add a whole new park facility for, one of them was like twenty, thirty million dollars, there's a million, two million, three million dollars a year in operation costs that go along with that of maintenance and then also personnel and staffing. Same goes with fire stations. Whenever we had fire stations, we've got staffing that goes along with that. I'd also, I didn't see, and maybe I just overlooked it, I didn't see any like actual construction of road projects in here. You know, we wouldn't be able to fully fund, you know, one or two of the big road segments, but at least if it's, if we have the costs, you know, we can figure out where to pull other dollars from trying to get federal state grants.
Correct.
I think there, it's weird if you budget for it, then they say, well, you don't need the money if you had it in your budget. So I'm looking at Deputy Mayor Matheny, because, you know, the county works on a lot of that stuff more of. If you show it in your budget and fully funded, well, they say you don't need the money. So just being careful with that, because I think we only had sixteen million dollars, which I don't think can do any of the segments that we're trying to design now. So I think that's my big questions there.
Just to answer those, we are factoring in this year OpEx, and probably going to be the worst nightmare for a lot of these directors. Hopefully, they stick, stick with me on it, that I'm going to scrutinize it a little bit more to make sure we're funding a little bit more diversified and understand the project because we don't want to be here on fire right now, especially like in a minute we're saying, hey, prices changed, we can't, you know, government can't react that way. So we're going to scrutinize it a little bit more, like I said and mentioned earlier in workshop, we're going to add these factors that we're adding now about cost rise, all these fancy words that we account as take care of to try to get closest to that nut, you know, to make sure and have that construction and design budget to get closer and mitigate, because we do, like in the mobility, sixteen million. We did factor one of them, and just one project alone, if we were even to remotely do phase one, was twenty-nine mil.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we're trying to do that, but understood, and I will note that again for you. I always appreciate your comments with that.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comment? Just remind everyone, this is an organic plan.
It's organic. It's got many arms and legs.
We will be seeing these things again, but I'd much rather aim at something and miss it than aim at nothing and hit it.
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt our capital improvement plan.
Second.
We have a second from council member Askew, and the motion from the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, Ms. Colazo, you are amazing. Thank you.
Sir, it is the team, trust me. It just sometimes brought a pretty face to it. Thank you, though.
Thank you and your staff. Next item is council action, and there are no council action items at this time. Our city attorney is not present tonight, so we'll move on to our city manager. Do you have anything for us?
I just want to update the city council, let you know that I met with Main Street Executive Director, and tomorrow, staff's working on coming forward to present some ideas on what we can do to assist in the downtown right now. But the biggest, fastest idea is that we're going to move forward potentially with a cloud cash program, which, keeping it under the city manager's authority so that I don't have to bring another agreement to you, so we can move quickly on that. So we're working on, on those details to kind of give you a complete package tomorrow, but wanted to let you know that was coming.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Trace.
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Askew.
I was going to ask the city manager how it is in the hot seat, but I won't. I have nothing.
Councilmember Urban.
Nothing for me, thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Matheny.
I don't have anything.
What? The street.
Thank you, Jesus. And the mayor doesn't have anything. Brings us to our information section, report section, Thursday, September the eighth. We will have a city council meeting tomorrow at six thirty PM here in council chambers. There are no items on our agenda. We will be adjourned. Thank you, Jesus.
I pulled it up, I have the...